Please rise for the pledge, Commissioner Nolan. Can you leave us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so before we commence, Commissioner Nolan's gonna swear in Commissioner Tab.
Yep. Is it there? Yep. Up there. Raise your right hand. I'm gonna, I'm gonna start it and I'll tell you to repeat your name when it's time to repeat your name.
Okay.
I repeat your name.
Jane Tab.
Repeat after me and state your name.
Are you want me to just pass you?
I, Jane Tab.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia?
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia?
I state your name.
I, Jane Tab.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will faithfully discharge and perform the duties of county commissioner?
That I will faithfully discharge and perform the duties of county commissioner?
Of the Middleway District?
Of the Middleway District?
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment?
And according to law, so help me God?
And according to law, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah. And you make the sign. I have, there's a blue pen.
I have a blue pen.
Okay. Very good. And then Jackie, you keep the fancy one, so you can frame it. And Jackie gets the white copy.
All right. All right. All right. First agenda item is a selection of president. So I'll open up for nominations and I'll make the first nomination. I nominate Commissioner Hudson. Are there any other nominations?
I'll nominate Commissioner Nolan.
Any other nominations? Okay, nominations are closed. All those in favor of Commissioner Hudson as president, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those, Commissioner Nolan, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Nolan, would you be president?
Okay. Thank you. I'd rather keep my seat out.
Unfortunately, I won't have it.
I like it in the end.
Yeah, Ralph is still in the room.
Oh yeah, I don't want to be called Commissioner Nolan.
And I don't want to be called Josh.
You don't have that much of a sense.
Great. Okay, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for December 20th.
Well, don't you get vice president first?
Vice president and all that.
Vice President Board.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're not that far yet. I was ahead of myself. I'm trying to get through the meeting. Okay.
Bad first sign.
Selection of Vice President? Are there nominations for Vice President? I'll nominate Jane Tab.
I'll nominate Commissioner Lawrence Eddy.
Any other nominations? Okay. All right, all in favor of Commissioner Hudson, say aye.
That wasn't one of the nominations, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Who did you nominate?
Lawrence Eddy.
Oh, that's right.
Chalk or not?
And I nominated Jane. I know, I was surprised. Okay, all in favor of Commissioner Lawrence Eddy?
Aye.
Say aye. All in favor of Commissioner Tab, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. So Commissioner Tab is the new Vice President. And now we're on to committee assignments. And we'll go to the list that's in the packet.
I have one correction on the list. It says about three quarters of the way down on the Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority that Commissioner Nolan's been serving on that. And I actually have been going to this meeting.
Yeah, you did. You took over my position because I had a conflict on that.
That's right.
So, yeah, Jane is on that one.
That's right, yeah.
So, we'll start at the top. Affordable housing. Caleb, are you okay to stay on that?
They disbanded, didn't they? Their last meeting was during my Parks and Rec meeting, so.
Do you have conflict with that?
Well, they moved their meetings, but I think they disbanded.
So, okay. So, yeah, once they, if they decide to, to start meeting again. Of course, I guess, when Mary Sel was here last week, though, she kind of indicated that there would be.
She's water advisory.
She's water advisory, okay. So, and affordable housing, I know it's been a struggle, yeah. Okay, so we'll leave that one and not do anything with it for now. How about approval of bills?
I mean, I can take that, if you're sure that's okay.
Okay. That's fine.
All right.
Are you aware of the time requirement?
Over?
Absolutely. Yeah, it does make a difference.
That's fine.
All right. Board of Health. Caleb, you want to stay on that?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Building Repair Security Courthouse Committee, I don't mind staying on that unless somebody else really wants it.
Be good.
Okay. Community Corrections Committee, Caleb's on that. You want to stay?
I enjoy it.
Okay. Development Authority, Mr. Anosco was on that. I would like to take that. Anybody, if no, has any objections?
Well, let me say, I'd be willing, but let me say, I think I'd be in the majority from what I've seen in past votes, so I think it'd be probably a...
Well, the board is gonna be reconstituted, too, so it'll be a different one.
If you want, in the past you want, you just, the commission will vote to who gets it, so, I mean, that's up to your priorities.
Okay. So, we can, I mean, we can vote to do that. So, those in favor, does anybody else want it? Okay. All those in favor of Ralph, say aye.
Aye.
Me?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I'll take the Development Authority. Okay, E-911 Council, Jane, you're on that?
Yeah, I'm fine to stay.
Stay, okay.
We meet quarterly.
Extension Service, I know, Jane, you enjoy that one. You want to stay there?
Yeah, I'd like to stay on that, please. And Farmland Protection Board.
Okay. Convention and Visitors Bureau, I'm Vice President of that group, so I'd like to stay on that if I could, unless somebody else really wants to.
That's fine with me.
Okay. Emergency Services Agency, Fire and Rescue, I would like to be back on that one.
Go for it, Jane.
All right. So, we'll put Commissioner, is anyone else interested in that? So, we'll put Commissioner Tab on that one. Historic Landmarks, Peter had that one. Does any, who wants to take?
I've been to one meeting. I don't have any problem with it. I don't...
I'd like to do it unless someone else wants to.
That's fine with me.
You don't have a problem with that, okay? So, we don't need to have an election?
Okay.
Okay, so Caleb will take that. Homeland Security?
And LEPC, yeah.
James on that?
Yeah, we have nice 7:30 a.m. meetings at IHOP.
Oh, okay.
A little bit of a challenge some days, but, yeah, I'd like to stay on that.
Legislative Liaison, the county administrator takes care of that. Do you want to stay on that, Stephanie?
Yes, I can do that unless there's somebody else who wants to.
And I think, and I think anytime we have any issues, of course, or any comments, or want to work on a particular piece of legislation, we'll certainly, yeah, we'll let you know.
Right, and you and I kind of did that together.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. MPO Interstate Council?
Passy, can I ask what that is?
It is the Metropolitan Planning Organization. It's actually HEPMO. And I've been on that. It's, it sort of goes hand in hand with Region Nine, so...
Well, the only reason I'm saying this, I'm not wanting to take you off anything, but I haven't been put on anything yet, and I don't want to...
Okay, yeah, I can, I don't mind turning that over to you.
Do you know when they meet?
It's not on a regular, they don't meet regularly. They just, they just, they let you know when the meetings are. It's usually like on a Monday. Matt, isn't it like a Monday every quarter or something like that?
That'd be a better question for Matt Melanex.
I know, yeah.
I don't know what their schedule is.
Yeah, I'm not sure what it is either.
It's sort of, and sometimes you're meeting in Hagerstown and sometimes you're in Martinsville.
Right, yeah, so those are the two places where they...
It goes over highway projects, basically, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah. So, Ralph, happy to turn that over to you. And also Region Nine, you want to take that over, too?
Sure.
Okay. The same, kind of the same people are involved in that, so. Okay, back up to the Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority. Jane has been serving on that one.
Yeah, I'm fine to continue.
Okay. Parks and Rec, Caleb's been on that?
I enjoy it.
You want to stay? Planning Commission?
I get, I'm willing. I've been to one meeting, so I think...
Okay, all right, we'll give you that. Public Service District, we don't have to worry about that anymore.
Hallelujah.
Solid Waste Authority, Josh?
I'm fine with that, unless someone else wants it.
Okay.
I'm fine, I'll stay on it.
Okay. Water Advisory Committee, Caleb. Workforce Investment Act, I'm on that. I think they don't meet very often, and it's usually about them, so I don't mind taking that. Anything else? Is everybody satisfied with their committee assignments? All right, we will move on. And I need a different man, is that one that's ready? Okay, now we're down to approval of the minutes from the December 20th, 2018 meeting.
I moved.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to accept the minutes of the December 20th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And now we're down to accounts payable for January 3rd.
December 27th, is it? I guess not.
Why?
I think it's the 27th's first name.
I know where mine is.
Right, but 27th.
I'll move approval of accounts payable December 27th, 2018, total amount $193,601.85.
Second.
And seconded, is there discussion?
I actually think those are, I'm sorry, I don't have one in front of me. I think those are manual checks.
That's, that's what I was wondering, is I was looking at it.
Okay, yeah, and that's, I guess that's why I couldn't find that.
That's what it's labeled, so I don't think we have any accounts payable.
Yeah, I don't think we do either.
Okay, so we'll take that one off.
We probably didn't run any that week because it was a short week.
Yeah. Okay, all right, so we'll remove that.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Drawn, and...
County Clarkson, back, did we run any, did you run accounts payable on December 27th? Okay.
All right, so let's go to January 3rd, accounts payable. I'll move the accounts payable for January 3rd in the amount of $1,075,000, $75,431.43.
Second.
It's been seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And now we're down to approval of manual checks.
Okay, I'll try this again.
Okay.
I move we approve manual checks. It's dated on my sheet as December 27th, 2018, total amount $193,601.85.
I'll second it. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And manual checks for January, January 4th, but it's, the date on the, on the register is January 3rd, so I'll move approval of manual checks for January 3rd in the amount of $16,870.50.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, now we're down to approval of payroll.
I move we approve payroll for December 27th, 2018, for $263,806.84. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, Stephanie, do you have announcements?
I have any announcements.
All right. And there are no changes in the agenda, so we'll move on to public comment. And the first person I have on the list to make public comment is Jay Mansfield.
I'm gonna try something a little different here. My name's Jay Mansfield, I'm from Shepherdstown. I've got a video here, and I'm just gonna play the sound for young kids who are, have asthma. I've been appointed by a lot of mothers who have kids with asthma, and we'll just listen to that while I get through this. The Jefferson County Hot Zone, five schools and a pollution source. Thirty-three hundred and fifty-six of our kids at North Jefferson, TA Lowry, Driswood, Wildwood, and Jefferson High School will be exposed to Rockwool pollution for 12 years as they go to school in the county that we love. That adds up to 2.4 million Rockwool pollution exposure days in the 12 years it takes to matriculate through the school system in that hot zone. State law mandates that the kids be bused to the hot zone every school day. Since 8.3 percent of the kids, on average, have asthma, the asthmatic children will suffer through a mandatory 200,000 Rockwool pollution exposure days. Sensitivity, children are more sensitive to pollution than adults. Kids with asthma just need a trigger of pollution, and a full-blown asthma attack is the result. I say, we currently have fresh air. If Rockwool doubles our pollution, is that still fresh air? If Rockwool says 20 times more pollution, is that fresh air? I wouldn't call that fresh air, but it's worse than you ever dreamed. Rockwool will pollute our air 20 to 30,000 times more pollution than the values in 2017. Rockwool is planning to steal our fresh air, and the WVDEP is driving the getaway car. No matter if Rockwool's toxic pollution is under regulation or at 40 percent of the regulations, Rockwool has 100 percent chance of taking our fresh air. Frankly, what potentially harms a kid will kill an asthma sufferer. If children die of asthma and pollution triggers asthma attacks and Rockwool pollutes the air with asthma triggers, we only have one conclusion. Rockwool is at risk of being the precipitating factor in a child's death. Add a temperature inversion to that and we'll have days and even weeks when the schools will close due to fear. Excuse me. Add a temperature inversion to that and we'll have days and even weeks when the schools will close due to fear. Schools always react in the name of safety, and when kids go to school, the county loses money. When kids don't go to school, the county loses money. In effect, Rockwool's 150 jobs makes the kids not go to school, which makes all the tax-free gifts and deal sweeteners vaporize. And Rockwool knew this. The JCDAs has not, still not published, a directive accounting for the level of pollutants they will allow in this county. Where's that ceiling? So, it's going to get worse. Imagine a janitor every day with a push lawnmower, and every day he goes into every classroom and starts the lawnmower indoors and runs it with the windows closed. That's what this good neighbor Rockwool is doing to our schools. We need you to fight harder to stop Rockwool. We need you to do it because you took the time to understand what I just said and made a decision to commit to fresh air. There's a lot of lies and deceptions out there. They're just a company trying to get by. I don't have anything against profit, but they said methanol and formaldehyde would break down in the sunlight in one to one and a half days. The truth, however, is that methanol breaks down in 18 days when it's a vapor. That means the buildup is close to 20 times higher in concentration in that air.
Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. You'll have to wrap up your comments now.
I've only got three more sentences.
No, that's okay. We're finished. Thank you. The next person's gonna come up. It's three minutes per person.
Yeah, aye.
Thank you. Diane Bluest?
Thank you. It's Bluest, Diane Bluest.
Okay, thank you.
From Harpers Ferry. Good morning, everyone, and Happy New Year. The decision taken, the decision taken yesterday in Maryland gives me hope for the New Year that maybe this will be the year that we finally get serious about climate change. I wanted to thank Jane for addressing the PSC meeting pipeline. You're the only person in the county and in authority that spoke out about that, and I really appreciate that. I'd like just to make a few comments, and I think I won't even take my full three minutes. I'd like to really ask you all, and especially you, Ms. Nolan, now that you're going to be the chairperson, to understand that development, economic development, needs to be considered, especially now, especially this year, after the reports that came out at the end of last year, against the backdrop of climate change. We can't, we don't have the time to do business as usual any longer. You have a duty to speak up and to protect the environment for the children that you just heard wheezing on that video. And I really expect that you all will do that. I know that there is still a certain amount of denial, which is ridiculous, in my view, but we can't afford to deny that anymore. If, if you want to leave an environment for our children that is worth living in, we, we have to take action. Not just you all, everybody in this room has to take action. Without clean air and without clean water, there is no economic development. It just can't happen. We have to have people who are healthy and who are thriving in order to have any type of economic development. Development without clean air and clean water is senseless. So, I leave you with the words of Chief Seattle, I am a native Washingtonian. We did not inherit the earth from our ancestors. We are borrowing it from our children. Please, pay attention, take action. Thank you.
Ruth Hatcher?
Good morning, good morning, good morning, Happy New Year. And I had the privilege of being at Annapolis yesterday to hear the good news about the pipeline. So, that's number one. And I'm going to elaborate on what Jay was talking about, because I have a personal experience with not breathing. And I had taken the antibiotic Cipro, and I took one dose, whoops, I took one dose in the evening and said, mm, I may have some allergy problems, right? Next morning, I woke up and had to go to the ER because I could not breathe. And that was about a year's journey of me not breathing. And it was horrible. And I could not explain how desperate I became because I'd never experienced this before. So, until you personally experience not breathing, I don't think you have a clue of how hard those children are breathing. And I certainly didn't either, but I quickly learned. And one day, I sat on my bed coming home from work, and I thought my life was over. I sat on the edge of the bed and said, oh my God, I think my life is over, because I couldn't breathe. You couldn't walk, you were so exhausted when you came home. I had to be moved over next to the air conditioner away from my coworkers. I had to put a sign on my cubicle that said, you could kill me if you came with perfume or chemicals near me. That's how desperate I was. It took a long time to get better. And I'm gonna tell you, once you personally experience not breathing, you don't understand. These children with asthma, it is the worst, what is it, it is the most chronic condition of children in the United States, is asthma, by the way. And I did learn, I had asthma. My children have asthma, apparently, my mother, my grandmother, so it all ran in the family. I did not know that. I knew I had trouble in the summertime walking and breathing, but I did not know. So, please, for the sake of these children, do not add more, okay, to this. And also, my grandson wanted to know, he's seven years old, I try not to talk too much about it, he wanted to know, why would someone put bad chemicals in our air? And he said, he said, why would they want to do that? And how do you explain to a little seven-year-old, why would people want to do that? And he also said, they must be mindless zombies. I think he's correct. People who want to, want to pollute children for the sake of money, they are mindless zombies. I agree with him. I would like to see this group of commissioners meet with children and look at their eyes and look at them and, and answer their questions, because they have some pretty deep questions. And you know what? They know when you're lying. And they, they don't buy stuff. So, you really need to have a meet the commissioners meeting with children and get their opinion, because they see right through you. They will look at you and they know the truth, and they know when people are lying. So, I would like you very much to do that. And our school protects the inside air for everybody, but yet the moment they open that, the school doors to go outside, they're gonna get polluted. That's not right. That is wrong on every single level. So, 30 times the, the current pollution is quite dramatic. And the reason they came here, because we have entertainment air, let's face it. If we had non-attainment air, they wouldn't have selected Jefferson County. And that's the bottom line. If we were non-attainment, they would have polluted us so bad to put us way over. So, the good reason, the good thing about our county, we have entertainment air. The bad rea, the bad thing is they came to us because we have entertainment air.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Danny Lutz?
I'm Danny Lutz, Cabletown District, and I'm going to dovetail with the comments that have already been made. I was quite pleased with the bipartisan decision of the Maryland Board of Public Works yesterday with regard to extending the pipeline under the Potomac River. And I was pleased especially with the reason given, which has not been stated by any of the other speakers, and that is that the gas to be transmitted under the Potomac River represents too great a hazard to the people of Maryland. And as you know, Maryland owns the Potomac River to the mean high watermark on this shore. The gas, Maryland banned fracking because it was too hazardous. They said this pipeline cannot go because that is a product of fracking, which is too hazardous. Marcellus shale is 1,000 times as radioactive as the Barnett shales of eastern Texas and Louisiana, which are also fracking zones. So, with all this in mind, I politely suggest that the county commission join with colleagues in Maryland and seek an injunction, and seek conjunctive relief, I believe is the lawyer's term, against further development of the Rockwool site until Rockwool is ready to commit to a zero emissions facility. I have offered Mr. Bjorn Anderson, President of Rockwool USA, information that would enable them, and this is through three companies, two in Germany and one in Canada, who are able to make them a zero emissions facility. Rockwool will not respond. And further, we, you talked, people talked about economic development. No one is going to locate here in Rockwool's footprint. They're not going to do it. We could have had, and I told you about this in November, we could have had a chance at 700 good-paying, non-polluting GS-level jobs if we could have bid on the National Institute of Food and Agriculture and the Economic Research Service. We didn't get a chance to do it. Our representative, Mr. Mooney, has not responded to my inquiries. Senator Manchin was caught dumbfounded, he only had information, which was two days older than the information I read in the Harrisburg Patriot News. And Representative McKinley, who did, whose district did get to bid on these projects, doesn't respond to either my inquiries or to the newspaper inquiries. That's as of last evening, talking to the reporters. So, it's time for the commission to start gathering supporters and go for an injunction.
Is there anyone else in the audience that has not spoken that would like to speak? Mr. Tab, come on down.
Good morning, David Tab, Jefferson County resident. Again, I point out to the county commission that the minutes for December 20th, regular meeting, which was approved, are not posted in the room. I have not found them. That is a requirement under the Open Meeting Act. So, that requirement has not been met. That means they're not approved. You also have Mr. Pennington... You also have Mr. Pennington, that's going to be coming in here, or he's right behind me, with the Chesapeake Bay, working on Phase III local government to help reduce pollution. Yet, we have two large pollution permits being allowed, of which I'm challenging. You may not have heard that, but I just filed papers to the governor yesterday to start assisting on removing some of these permits. They're, they're kind of tied up right now. They're, don't know what they're going to do. But yet, Mr. Pennington's trying to, to give a Phase III local government strategy of how to reduce pollution. So, and I have asked him several times to give me information to the Chesapeake Bay of who's in charge of endangered species. I've yet to receive that information. So I went on my own. So now, I am in contact with the Chesapeake Bay, and they did not know anything, that dealing with endangered species, did not know anything about Rockwool or Tima. They do now. And they're very interested. So I've already emailed them a bunch of information. You guys brought this thing in. All five of you knew about it. All five of you. You haven't done anything. Plus the fact that here we got a lot more people here on the counsel side prosecuting attorney. So I'm not the only one fighting y'all. Good job. And then on the 14th, y'all were supposed to have a meeting at the South Jefferson Elementary, meet and greet. Why don't you make it to North Jefferson? Those are the ones, those are the ones that are going to die. So why don't you bring it to them? This is real important, if y'all haven't figured it out. A lot more people are joining with me, and once the election happens, does not mean you do not have to listen to your constituents. Now, I think I've gotten a lot of people's attention. And there is another election coming up. It's not that far away. And I am just hoping that you would start taking notes. And y'all have a nice day.
Have I missed anyone in the audience who would like to come on down and state your name into the record, so we can be sure we know who you?
Colin Stein. I think it's more important that I'm a Jefferson County taxpayer. I just wanted to point out the news story over the Christmas holidays about silicosis being a major problem in miners in West Virginia. Silicosis is caused by breathing mineral particulates. Rockwool's going to be emitting lots of mineral particulates. It's in their application. Our children will be breathing those mineral particulates, and I wonder if in 20 years, will our children be like those miners with severely damaged lungs? We can do the experiment by letting Rockwool go, or we can ask them to clean up the particulates before they emit them.
Thank you. Haven't missed anyone? Okay, we'll move on to the next.
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm not going to address any of their issues. I did get asked on the street the other day by Mr. Lutz whether, if there's a list of the online applications for Development Authority Board, he was asking me if he, if we got his.
We usually don't listen online until we, we put all of the applications, resumes, in the packet. And that goes out the Monday before the Thursday meeting, but we typically don't see applicants that we've gotten, and we usually don't get that many. This is the most we've probably ever gotten for any board. So if the commission would like us to put them online, we can try to do that.
I think that was told by Mr. Lutz.
No, it's not. It will be in the packet on Monday. You can go through, and it's bookmarked, and if you look under JCDAs appointments, you can see every, and all their information. And that's our standard, that's always been our standard practice.
All right. We'll move on to presentations, and the first person on the list is Matt Pennington of the Eastern Panhandle Planning and Development Council, Region Nine. Good morning, Matt.
Good morning, Commissioner. How are you? Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you.
My name is Matthew Pennington. I work for the Eastern Panhandle Planning and Development Council. We are your regional council. We represent local governments in Morgan, Berkeley, and Jefferson Counties, as well as those municipalities as far west as Paw Paw, all the way to far east as Harper's Ferry. I'm in charge of the Chesapeake Bay program. And in 2011, the regional council decided to be local government's voice to the Department of Environmental Protection and to the Environmental Protection Agency to assist in meeting the responsibilities to improve water quality within the Potomac Basin. Since that time, a Phase II watershed implementation plan was drafted. And what that watershed implementation plan is, is a series of strategies that are feasible within many sectors, one of which is local government, one is develop lands, or when you do construction and permitting processes, agricultural wastewater, and forested lands, since the state is heavily forested within the Chesapeake Bay watershed. Since 2011, those strategies have been implemented to great success. You all have done a fantastic job. You were the first to voluntarily adopt a stormwater management ordinance that was over and above the requirements of the state, but was a strategy within the watershed implementation plan. That leadership set a tone throughout the rest of the region, where many other communities saw the leadership here in Jefferson County and moved forward to voluntarily address, or adopt those same standards, which you all, all did. And that was, I believe, done in 2012, 2013. It was a long process, how all ordinances should be. So thank you for that. Many other strategies were implemented, as well as some of your wastewater treatment plant upgrades in the county, as well as the rest of the region, to a large economic sum. And those improvements have been paying off. West Virginia is the only state, in addition to the District of Columbia, that is currently meeting all its reduction requirements and is on track to meet its 2020, year 2025 reduction requirements. So that's a, that's a little bit of background of where we've been. However, we're not done yet. There's still a little bit of road left to go. These, these strategies, which I talked about earlier, are aimed at reducing three contaminants of concern that affect the Chesapeake Bay water, the Chesapeake Bay waters. It's nitrogen and phosphorus, which are common elements found in fertilizers and in human and animal waste. The second, or the third contaminant concern is sediment that is released when we have high flood, flood events, and you start to see this chiseling of the way of our stream banks, as well as poor construction practices that may leave open, open cuts or open grading without silt fence or other proper best management practices, which will reduce that, that sort of chocolate milk-looking runoff that can enter into streams, and that you've probably seen quite a bit of in our area. There's some additional sources, such as, you know, poorly constructed gravel or dirt roads that can lead to sediment. Other agricultural areas that, that we're trying to attend to with, you know, no-till harvesting and no-till practices on agricultural lands, things like that. So every strategy in there is looking at reducing or bringing awareness to those three contaminants of concern. In 2011, our regional council hosted a series of local input meetings, which took in opinions and strategies and identified areas of need, as well as areas of strengths, that this region could, could emphasize and lead to a, a plan that was achievable. Considering the success that we had in our Phase II process, the regional council decided that, once again, for this Phase III document, which we're embarking on currently, the same process would be, would make the most sense. Region Nine hosted a series of meetings throughout the summer of 2018. One was a kickoff meeting in June to sort of drive the process that's going to be taking shape. And then I met individually with each county as we discussed feasible, feasible strategies within those communities, as well as, you know, areas of priority that they would like to see addressed in this round of the plan, as well as things that have worked out well in the past. So I'm going to lead you through a walk, a read ahead that I provided you all, and just be walking you through this document, explaining in a little bit more detail what those findings were at those, at that series of meetings. Overall, there was approximately five strategies that continuously arose from each community as I visited each candidate. The first one, that you'll see on page two, is the source water protection plan implementation. In 2011, when the Phase II Chesapeake Bay implementation plan was drafted, there was no state requirement requiring drinking water utilities to have and implement a source water protection plan. Given this area and the demographic and the land use, a large number of the contaminants of concern in the bay watershed were also identified in the source water protection plan. Some of those were septic tank maintenance, as well as extensions into providing public service to those areas, and some agricultural practices as well. These are great overlapping strategies for both your source water protection plan and the Chesapeake Bay implementation plan. The second, which may or may not be feasible for the county, but is certainly within reach for your cities of Charlestown and Ranson, are the municipal separate storm sewer program, or what EPA and WVDEP sometimes refer to as the MS4 program. This is a, this is essentially a NPDS permit, which is National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, which is what a wastewater plant would apply for, or a construction site would apply for, for certain water quality requirements. However, with the MS4 NPDS permit, it's non-point. There isn't one source of, of the contaminant that will be observed and, and regulated. So it's a non-point program, which means there's these six minimum control measures that are a little bit more subjective and are under review by, by the State Department of Environmental Protection. Currently, Berkeley County and Martinsburg are the only two regulated MS4 communities. It's based on population density. Okay? So when the, you, one way a community could be designated into the MS4 program is when the US Census data is released and it's determined that a community is an urbanized area. And the Department of Environmental Protection has that designation authority based on the population density, or if they're not meeting certain water quality requirements from the Clean Water Act. Right now, I don't feel that that is within Jefferson County's future. However, like I said, I do believe that Charlestown, Ranson, and possibly Shepherdstown could fall within that urbanized area during the 2020 census data release. So that's what we're waiting for now. I don't believe that you will be, DEP will use that residual designation authority based on our Chesapeake Bay standings, because we're meeting our responsibilities within that program and the Clean Water Act. So again, part of your leadership has gone to achieving that.
Just a question. What is, do you, you know off the top of your head what that population density is, that terms becomes?
It's sort of a moving target. It really is at the designation, designate authority of the census. Off the top of my head, I believe it's around 5,000 people per square mile, but please don't quote me on that. I would have to look that up and get you. But there is a, there is a finite number, but it does tend to move. But if census does designate an urbanized area, that, that can trigger.
I wondered if it was same as air quality. I did a little research on that, you know, whether we are urban or rural, and we returned rural, but.
I can, I can give you the exact number of what the current permit designates as an urbanized area is.
I know you said Berkeley. Yeah, I know Washington County, Maryland's also.
That's correct.
Are we almost surrounded now?
Very close. Very close.
And that, if I remember right, I saw a presentation on it, you have to identify every pond in your county, and you have to guarantee, not guarantee, but you have to see if they drain within 72 hours and other factors.
Yes. It's a very extensive program, and it leads up into that. So it's almost incremental every year for what you're planning on doing. And when you apply for the permit, because you do have to apply like any other permit, you have to identify what you're going to accomplish within a certain, you know, permit cycle. And that's a document called a Stormwater Management Program Plan. It's very extensive and very detailed. It gets approved by the state, and then you have to show your progress on that. So it may not be in the first cycle that you would need to do all those ponds and identify them all. Maybe it's only a certain percentage. Again, it's a very subjective review process by the state, and they're overseen by the EPA and how they set that permit up. But yes, that would be a requirement at some point within that MS4 permit to, to identify those ponds and periodically go back and see if they're operating appropriately, or still doing what they're supposed to be designed to do.
I just want you to scare Roger back there.
I'm sure.
He already knows.
Yeah. Roger should.
Your county engineer is very aware of, of a lot of the requirements, and also very aware of, of the importance of stormwater within the county, and was a, a big asset in, in assisting in developing the stormwater management ordinance, as well as your plan and commission at that time, so.
Started that, the, the stormwater part in its infancy was in the 90s, wasn't it, that we started that? Or was it earlier than that? Roger?
The county's had stormwater management quantity control, not quality, which is the pollution aspect back into the 80s.
Okay. I, I knew, yeah, we were one of the first areas, at least, to do the, why are the stormwater ponds?
And as of now, the ordinance that you all developed several years ago that I spoke earlier about is very close, if not where it needs to be, to be, to be MS4 compliant with that permit. That is, one of the minimum control measures is those construction and post-construction standards. So your erosion and sediment control practice during the construction process, as well as the best management practices for stormwater, capturing that first one inch of runoff, is in line with that. There may be a few other enforcement details that would need to be included into that, but at, at this point, it, it seems a little, it doesn't seem as necessary. You're taking the appropriate voluntary steps for, for where you are at this time. Moving on, a third overlapping strategy from each community was a concept known as green infrastructure implementation to reduce flash floodings. Obviously, the rains from the spring and the summer of 2018 were at the top of a lot of planners and engineers and communities' minds, seeing the impacts that were created just by this new inundation of, of water that we're, we've come to realize. Green infrastructure is not necessarily alternative energy. It's green infrastructure, because it's the color green. It's trees, it's biology, it's soil management, to capture and reduce pollution in a natural way. You've probably seen a few green infrastructure projects be incorporated into nearby areas. Some rain gardens are good examples of this. The, the gardens and the, the stormwater swales that you see along Fairfax Boulevard in Ranson are an example of green infrastructure. Increasing your tree canopy in and around areas of urban or on the agricultural side, where there'd be, you know, riparian buffers and securing those stream banks so that they have a, sort of a barrier from, from eroding when you have those high water vents. These are all green infrastructure practices that can not only reduce pollution in the Chesapeake Bay watershed for nitrogen, phosphorus, and sediment, but also reduce your flash flooding instances that can provide, you know, that can create havoc in your, in your local area and reduce, you know, some of your operate commerce and schools and, you know, mobilize your emergency management, things like that. So second, which kind of dov, or fourth, which dovetails from green infrastructure from these flash floods events, we saw a large amount of sanitary sewer inflow and infiltration into your wastewater treatment plants. And for those of you who might not be familiar with that, it's essentially when rainwater gets into your sanitary system, because it's competing for the same real estate. Most grab, most sanitary sewers gravity-fed, and stormwater always wants to go downhill as well. So there's inevitable that there's going to be times where they fight for that same space. But when you get that high amount of, of water, it starts to get into those systems, and you start to see spikes at your wastewater treatment plant, where they're effectively treating stormwater instead of treating wastewater. This can have a number of different impacts for nitrogen and phosphorus, because it might not have the same consistency that normal raw effluent would have going into the system. It could see too much, and you would have a discharge of, of raw effluent into certain systems, because you just can't treat that much water during those spikes, during those flash flood events. This night, this might not be true at all plants, but it could be true at some of your smaller plants. So there was an incredible amount of attention paid to finding ways to, you know, shore up those systems that may have cracks, or those manholes whose seals may have come undone, or possibly capturing stormwater higher up in the watershed or sewer shed before it has a chance to get down to that bottom. So you're limiting the amount of water as a whole, which again ties back into that green infrastructure for flash flood reduction. So it's a nice sort of one-two combination. And finally, to really kind of sum up all that is utility. And finally, to really kind of sum up all that is utility asset management. So how do you know where your sanitary sewer systems are? How do you know what kind of condition those systems are in? To reduce the inflow and infiltration, well, it's a strategy called utility asset management, where you go out and actually survey and inspect all of your utility lines on a pretty reoccurring basis. That way, your utility managers know exactly what condition they're in. Everything has a shelf life. Nothing lasts forever. And you can say, well, this manhole over on, you know, Mildred Street needs to be replaced probably within three or four years. It's showing some typical signs of wear and tear, and before, you know, we start to get those increased inflow and infiltration, we should schedule that for replacement or repair within that time. So when you do this utility asset management, you start gathering the data that's needed to develop a capital improvement plan, so you can incrementally replace and manage in a way that makes most sense. When you're able to understand how much and when those systems would need to go in for repair, replacement, and have that budget in place, you can also combine some of the other ideas that I shared with you today in terms of green infrastructure implementation. So you know you're going to have to go in and do that sanitary project. Hey, why you got the engineers? Why you have survey crews out there? Why you're closed down the street? Why you have contractors and heavy equipment mobilized to do that project? Is there any other projects in and around that area that you do to install green infrastructure? Maybe it's a rain garden on that corner. Maybe it's, you know, incorporating a couple tree plantings over here in this area. So you're able to maximize the public benefit with the public dollar by incorporating multiple projects and achieving economy of scale for public projects on the infrastructure side, whether it be sanitary water, stormwater. So those are a few things that, when I met with representatives of each community, were identified. Real quick, if you turn to page three, I'll share with you a couple other key strategies that were included in Jefferson County's priorities, some of which we've already covered in the overlapping strategy, so I'll just skip over those when they come up on the list. So I already spoke about priority number one with implementation of green infrastructure. Priority number two was trying to do more greenway trail and park development with your parks and recs programs, as well as Charlestown and Ranson's parks and recs programs, and getting people out, enjoying nature, utilizing those public spaces and parks as a way of capturing some of that excess stormwater that I had talked about that we'd started receiving. So looking at those as benefits within your community, not only recreationally and leisurely, but also as part of your infrastructure as a whole on the stormwater side. Increase public engagement and agricultural engagement, getting messages out how the public can participate. That's really one of the MS4 minimum control measures, but here you could certainly incorporate and start that ball rolling if you so chose, and that your representatives thought were very important. As well as on the agricultural side, you know, working with your farmland protection boards, working with your agricultural community, get them to sign up for Natural Resource Conservation Service programs, USDA programs that they're cost share eligible for, and utilizing those funds to, you know, again, find ways to do nutrient management planning, to not excessively fertilize their crop fields or their hayfields, work with animal management systems, and always, always, always trying to find ways to shore up those riparian buffers that agricultural properties owners may have crossing along their farm fields. Fourth was this sort of a complete street development and a more defined role by the West Virginia Department of Highways. You know, sometimes when you'll get out into the rural areas, you'll see some ditch management that can be somewhat questionable, as well as, you know, understanding how they fit in with stormwater. Obviously, you know, you typically see flooding mostly along the roadways, because that's, you know, kind of where you're traversing and traveling through. So understanding how we can work better with the Department of Highways in getting green infrastructure implemented, doing some different designs for stormwater while they do those street upgrades, again, trying to capitalize on that capital improvement project that they're doing, but also incorporating some stormwater as we go along the way, so. I've already spoken about sanitary sewer inflow and infiltration asset management. So these are some of the strategies that were specific, and that will, that have already made the cut to talk with the state DEP and getting it into that Phase Three plan to assist with some of your local outcomes. However, you know, it's still open for comment, and still we can take questions and talk with DEP about incorporating other strategies. The draft plan is due in April of 2019, so we still have a good bit of weeks before we have to submit to EPA for their review. And then the final is due in August of 2019, where that plan would be put in place, and then we would be operating off of that plan until the year 2025 and implementing those strategies. And that's what EPA would be reviewing our progress on, and how far we've come in the program. So again, it's very important to identify feasible strategies, but also strategies that are locally important to you all, and then to have that ability to reduce nitrogen, phosphorus, and sediment within the Potomac Basin.
Thank you, Matt. Does anyone have any questions?
I just wanted to clarify. August 2019 is the first date?
April.
April.
That's the draft, and then August. And that's how it stands today. That date has changed many times. And with our current federal situation, it may change again.
Yeah, that's true. So as this draft is being developed, is there a place where we could look at it and add our own comments if we feel something's missed? How does that work? I mean, who participates in the draft and the final?
Again, since 2011, I've been your voice onto that, but you also have had participants on many calls. I believe planning, your planning director has been involved in calls in the past. These are the strategies that local government's going with today. So the read ahead that you have is what we're looking at putting in. If you want to add or get clarification on any of these, I would say use this document for now. When the draft plan is suitable for release, I will let every local government know that. At this point, it's still being worked on, and it isn't.
Well, I understand that. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Matt, thank you very much. Very informative, and we appreciate all you do for us, and fascinating, to me, it's fascinating work, so.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Colonel, I had just a question, and it's not really about the plan. It was, when you were talking about the MS4 designation, and you said that the municipalities may reach that designation, that requires the municipalities to implement their own MS4 plan. Am I right about that? It's not through the county commission?
It depends on who the permit would be designated to.
Okay, all right.
For instance, in Berkeley County, the Berkeley County Commission or Council does not own the permit. It's in the hands of the sanitary sewer district, and now they've created their own stormwater district. So they're the owners of that permit.
Okay.
But in the case of Berkeley County, it's a countywide initiative and program. So many, many, many details would have to unfold before you get to that point, but the first one would be, you would need to be designated. So, and again, in the case of the municipalities, if either Ranson or Charlestown, or in the case, possibly both would be designated, it may make sense for them to have one combined stormwater district, instead of having two communities adjacent.
Right.
Doing multiple, you know, being duplicative of one another. So again, I can't speak for Charlestown and Ranson, how they would manage that, if they would need to manage that at this point. We're still a little bit away, ways away from getting a determination on that, but many, yeah, many different things could occur, and as long as it's satisfactory within the confines of the permit, DEP would be all right with it, and EPA would be fine with it. It could be overseen by any government authority.
Okay. And I believe that we have to keep in mind, too, that Berkeley County only has two municipalities. That's Martinsburg and Hedgesville, right? So a lot of the people who live in Berkeley County live in Berkeley County, so, and not necessarily in the municipality, so that's a different dynamic.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, Matt, thank you so much. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, Seth Revard with the City of Charlestown is here to make a presentation to request approval of evening and weekend parking in county parking lot. Hi, Seth.
Good morning. County Commissioners, how are you? Seth Revard, City of Charlestown, Director of Community Development. Thank you for taking some time to have this on your agenda this morning. So city council has sent me on behalf of them to request this parking amendment that, you know, parking change that you have in your rear lot, and they have endorsed this agenda request. So as you all recognize, you know, your parking lot is exclusively used for the permit holders as it sits now. Clearly, during the business hours, it's used extensively, but outside those business hours of when county offices are open, it's fairly vacant and not used, but the sign still states you can't use the parking at all during those times. So this proposal would open the parking lot Monday through Thursday, 6:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m., and then Friday to Monday to 2:00 a.m. So Friday at 6:00 to Monday at 2:00 a.m. And this would really be outside the normal business hours, open up a lot of parking spaces that are available in the downtown area to walking events, you know, the shops and events and tourist attractions, and any other sort of things that happen in the downtown area as well. So this, you know, would allow non-permit holders to park during those times I had mentioned. You know, Charlestown has recently been designated a Main Street community. In short, that's a national program that's worked in many other communities, has four principal key points to help kind of revitalize your downtown, get things moving forward. That's our goal. We're hiring a downtown coordinator to do that. So this is part of a larger initiative, this agenda request is part of a larger initiative to try and make way for some improvements in our downtown and try to get more activity, more retail businesses instead of some of the services that predominantly dominate the downtown. So that's really kind of how this request fits into our overall vision. The city council would pay for the change in the signs. You have five of them in your agenda packet. There's really a proposed signage here. It would need one amendment. It says the Sunday there would need to change to Monday. That was a mistake. But that would really be the signage. You have two types of signage out there. This would unify all your signage as well. I think that really generally covers sort of the request that we're looking for. We believe this would benefit both the county and the city. Clearly, if people are downtown doing activities and participating in things, I mean, all property tax generates, you know, to both the city and the county, so there's a positive economic component here that we're trying to generate.
One quick question. So I mean, if it's not being used, I mean, I totally agree with it. My only concern is the increased use as far as the county's O&M costs to maintain the lot. If it's being used a lot more now, it's going to deteriorate a lot faster probably, and then that falls on the county. That's my only concern with that.
Well, and I have a couple of concerns, too. It's a liability issue to the county, I believe. What effect would that have on our insurance and security? I mean, who's going to, if there are cars parked there, you know, potentially happen? And I don't know that I'm willing to, you know, without seeing those things addressed. But the biggest thing to me is the liability and security.
One of the things I did put in here, that the City of Charlestown would be amenable to try and figure out that issue of at least liability, recognizing that we've opened it up to general patrons, you know, the public broadly. And so it's something, depending on how that needs to be, we could try and get a rider onto that, but Stephanie?
Well, and I would suggest probably some sort of memorandum of understanding between the county commission and the, to affect, you know, who's responsible for what, and probably some sort of indemnification for those hours where the city would be using it. So something a little more defined in writing is what I would suggest if the commission is interested in going that route.
Well, and I think this is a good concept, but I believe Bill Polk's brought in a proposal to redesign the entire parking lot, to make it a more functional parking lot, more parking spaces and fewer entrances. I'd like to see that done first. And I too, not only the security, but I wonder, and I don't know, do the judges ever come in on the weekends and go to their room office and work?
They can. Magistrates, too.
The magistrates, so I don't know how much parking we need to segregate and make sure that is.
Do the magistrates use the street parking?
Well, that's what I didn't know, who parked where. But I thought at least.
I do have it, in the same vein, we have the assessors of parking, all their vehicles during the evenings there. We may have to make sure that's.
You do have, you do have signage in the very back on Liberty acknowledging that that is strictly for city vehicles in that location in a respect of that concern. There's probably a pragmatic element here, too, is, you know, even if we have a more successful thriving downtown, I don't think we're going to be using all the spaces in this location as well. So I think conflicts can be generally minimal there. Can appreciate some of the, you know, liability aspect, and maybe we can put that as an acknowledgement in our agenda request.
One other comment, or two other comments I had was, light would have to be in the memorandum, and also, snow removal would have to be.
Right. That's just what I was thinking. Snow removal and ice, that's.
I don't want it to become a regular parking spot for somebody who is, you know, just maybe lives in town, or maybe for another business, or, you know, the county, and another issue that I have, too, is the county spends a fortune to the city in parking permits. So maybe we could work something out with that.
That's true. I mean, realistically, just from a business standpoint, if we can bring more people to local businesses, that's the top priority.
I'm not talking about.
I recognize the fact, yeah.
Okay.
But that would have been the MOU as well.
Right. Right. So maybe if the city was, would work with the county a little bit on the cost on some of these parking permits.
Certainly. So probably what I'm hearing is that staff should work together with your staff, and we can handle it from there, and see if that addresses some of your concerns.
Yeah, and I don't know that all the parking, I mean, I don't know that every parking spot, I think we would have to, because there are people that do come in to work in the evenings, they stay late, and, you know, so for me, the security is a big issue, and I would think maybe certain designated spots would have to be, would have to be worked out, too.
Well, and I hope you involve Bill Polk in this, yeah.
Yeah.
I actually did talk to Bill a little bit to see what his thoughts were, but he could. Yeah, so what I would suggest is that we, I work with Seth, and we come back to you with a memorandum of understanding for approval.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Have a good day.
Thank you, too. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, Roger Goodwin, Chief County Engineer, is here for some business with the engineering department.
The first one's a partial release of $290,783.03 from the construction bond for the Bavarian Inn, Bavarian Inn Brew Pub Edition, Planning Commission file number S-17-07, for a new construction bond amount of $11,877. This project's located on the east side of Route Five, Shepherd Grade Road. Work remaining includes, but is not limited to site stabilization and the bond contingency amount. And there's a recommended motion on the agenda request, number one.
I'll authorize a partial release of $290,738.03 from irrevocable letter of credit, number 300026965-4501 with United Bank, for the Bavarian Inn Incorporated, Bavarian Inn Brew Pub Edition, file number S-17-07.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded discussion?
Just one thing, it's nice to see them doing that. That definitely brings in folks. Millennials from DC will drive out just for stuff like this, so.
Yeah, we've been over there. It's really nice. It's a beautiful, beautiful addition, yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
The next one's a complete release of the remaining $3,019 for the construction bond amount for William H. Scott Inter vivos trust Spark Training Campus, Phase Two, Section One, lots one through four. One, lots one through four, 11 and residue, Planning Commission File Number 07-14R. This project is located on the south side of Route 13, Summit Point Road, and on the west side of Route 1, Lee Town Road. The work appears to be 100% complete, and the recommended motion is on the agenda request number.
All right. I move we complete the release of cash in escrow with BCT, Charlestown, West Virginia Construction Bond Security for William H. Scott, Inter vivos trust, Spark Training Campus, Phase Two, Section One, lots one through four, 11 and residual, File 0714R.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion?
I just have a question. You say it's completed. Has anything actually been constructed on the lots? Because you've got a curiosity.
I don't know. Yeah.
That was sort of my question. Is this all part of the, what I call Summit Point Racetrack, just a new area? I know it's accessed by a different road than the racetrack.
The map on the last page shows where the racetrack is, and it shows this subdivision where this site is.
So it's not a housing subdivision. It's a business subdivision. Business office.
They've had a lot of different projects that they've run through us out there, kind of changing one way to another to meet the federal government standards for what they're doing, et cetera, over the years.
Well, and that's what I was trying to understand. It's changed so much from what, you know, the original plan was. That's what I wanted to understand, so, okay.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thanks, Roger.
If I could, can I take a couple of minutes and comment on the Chesapeake Bay presentation?
Absolutely.
I think I've got some information you should keep in the back of your mind, especially as you develop the budget for the coming fiscal year and with regard to the Chesapeake Bay. We passed four or five years ago a stormwater management ordinance that added pollution control, quality control. It's the capture of the runoff from the one-inch storm event, which is part of the MS4 program under DEP and the EPA. We voluntarily did that. DEP was asking us to do that, and we are not an MS4 community. They couldn't force us to do it. They seemed to be driving us at the time to becoming an MS4. That was one of the strategies that they wanted in their earlier Phase One, Phase Two plans, was to have the county be doing the one-inch capture, and we're doing that. And it's part of our ordinance, and we're inspecting and seeing that things are designed to do that. When you become an MS4 community, whether you're designated one or you would voluntarily become one, it's a much more involved program with ongoing reporting, mapping, fixing stormwater issues, et cetera. It would more likely require creating a stormwater utility and charging utility fee. And in discussions I had with DEP back when we adopted the ordinance, their representatives indicated that that would be their expectation, that the resources to do that and manage an MS4 program would probably require creating a stormwater utility to come up with the revenue unless it came out of your general fund. And that's what you commonly hear called, especially over in Maryland, the rain tax.
Quick question. You say, so essentially it would be a rain tax. Did Berkeley County try to do that? Berkeley County tried to do it, and it didn't happen.
They called it the rain tax in Berkeley County.
But it didn't happen in Berkeley County, though?
Not yet.
What are we talking about as far as cost on this?
Okay, I'll just tell you a few things. As I know it, I don't, this is what I've gotten from talking to my counterparts in Martinsburg and stuff over the years. So Berkeley County became an MS4, and it's my understanding is that they actually owned some stormwater facilities. And part of the definition of an MS4 community to be designated one is, under the definition, you own stormwater facilities, whether it be a road culvert, a stormwater pond, stormwater inlet, some piping, et cetera. If you own that, you meet part of that definition. Jefferson County does not own any stormwater drainage, stormwater management, any stormwater facilities at this point.
It doesn't sound like we want to.
So that's why we voluntarily adopted the stormwater ordinance, the one-inch captures, because we, at the time, my take was that we couldn't be designated an MS4. So we didn't meet the definition for an MS4. Berkeley County, having to become an MS4 and trying to deal with how to fund that, they moved the MS4 functions over to the sanitary sewer utility because the sanitary sewer utility knew how utilities operated. I think it was with a, down the road, we're probably going to create a stormwater utility, and they seem like the logical entity here to manage all that. It'd become one of their functions. In Martinsburg, they did a study three, four, or five years ago. They hired a consultant to do a study to determine what resources they needed to manage their MS4 program. They had been splitting all the duties up between the street department, the engineering department, and the planning department. And my understanding is that it became so involved that, and it was eating into the other duties that they had to do, that they had to look at, how are we going to manage this? And that the consultant came up with that it was going to cost them, the number in my head is like about $300,000 in staffing and resources annually, manage that program and get it out of all those departments and get it centralized. And I think Martinsburg has so far hired two staff members to start mapping their systems and dealing with the reporting and the public education on it and so forth. So my whole point being is that if you're considering voluntarily doing this, which I have no problem with, cleaning up pollution's a good thing, but there would be a cost to it, and you need to keep that in the back of your mind, and where that revenue would come from to pay for that.
I'd like to see what that cost can be quantified as. I think residents should be concerned if people are seriously potentially thinking about doing this, what is that cost?
Now, Andy Blake and I did have a discussion this past year when this stuff was going on, and he knows that they might be designated a stormwater utility. His feeling was that there probably should just be one central utility for the whole county, whoever is pulled into that. And that probably makes sense from an economical standpoint.
For cities, it would make sense. It's essentially the county subsidizing the city because now they are designated as a, so.
My concern was, I also listened to Washington County, and they were having memo understandings with the individual subdivisions to make sure that they complied. Now, they, you know, was on the, onto the subdivision owner to keep the pond up, but the county was, or the authority, whatever it was, had to look at every pond in the county to make sure that they were complying.
Yeah, I worked up there in 2001, and I know that they had a guy, his only job was to go around and check all those stormwater facilities. And we're talking at that time about possibly the need to create a stormwater utility, that the county, I think, actually owns some stormwater management facilities, and they have a road department in Maryland, in Washington County. So they obviously own drainage systems and so forth, so they would have been pulled in.
Yeah, if, I'm not looking to go there, but, I mean, if this ever became, you know, the way we have business, I mean, what would you do with the community, like, where, you know, I know part of it's Department of Highways and the roads, which aren't allowed really wide enough to put the right kind of drainage in and so forth. I mean, I don't see what the, how to manage something like that.
Yeah, Matt might be able to explain more, and I'd have to do some research, but I don't know that this is so much, you create the utility, and you're going to fix all the storm drainage issues in the county. It's pollution prevention and the things that you're doing to fix the things that are creating the pollution and managing and reporting, educating and mapping and all that stuff, so.
Oh, but I think the reality is it's going to be tough, and especially certain areas in the county, and it involves the Department of Highways as much as it involves the county.
It probably would become a web of.
We want a rain tax. That's Maryland lunacy. Rain tax? Let's be serious.
But I'm not against preventing pollution.
I don't think anybody is.
I just want you to know that there's a cost to it.
No one's saying you're against preventing pollution, and no one's saying we want pollution.
So that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much, Roger. And we're going to take a break. We'll be back about five minutes after 10.